And today is April 15, and the time now is 9:10. The committee will hear and accept testimonies both oral and written on the following: Bill 68-35 COR, introduced by Theresa, Senator Theresa M. Terly, an act to appropriate $150,000 from the General Fund to the Department of Administration for continued operation of the Guam Autism Center. Bill 66-35 COR, introduced by, again, Senator Theresa M. Terly, an act to amend Section 2912 P of Article 9, Chapter 2 of Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the age qualification and insurance cap amount for the treatment of autism spectrum disorder. I'd like to acknowledge the senators that have joined us today. We have Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, we have Senators Sabina Perez and Senator Telo Tidaway, and also the author of the two bills, Senator Theresa Terly. The general rules for public hearing. The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows: Those testifying will be recognized in the order signed up on the sign-in sheet. Written testimony may be read lengthy. Written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be produced, shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for the proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony, or may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from the room. Let me just advise, I know that the audience today are well aware of the proper decorum and form, and I won't have to worry about escorting anybody out. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name. We will ask for, I've got Pamela Canata. Will you be speaking, ma'am? If you can, please come forward. We have Rios Tiffany. If you can please come forward, and I'll be, as I call the name, please come forward and have a seat in the front, because you'll be speaking. We have Ms. Polino. We have Ms. Kanada. Right? Kanada? Not Canada, right? But Kanada? Is Canada? Oh, okay. Maybe on Guam, maybe it's Kanada. But okay, we understand. We understand, okay. No problem, Ms. Kanada. We also have Dr. Vinnie Duñez, but I guess he isn't, where are you going to speak? Oh, okay, sir, you were the first one, but you put an X versus, everybody put a check mark. Must be because you're a doctor. Must be because he's a doctor, right? But I understand. And I'd ask, before we begin any of your testimony, I'd ask the author of the bill to please have her opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you. We've decided to just do testimony on both bills at the same time, if that's okay with everyone, so I'm going to just briefly introduce both of the bills. So, the Centers for Disease Control calls autism "the fastest-growing developmental disability." They estimate that it impacts one in 59 children in the U.S. A new analysis of the 2016 National Survey of Children's Health by the Autism Speaks Organization found that nearly a fifth of children with autism have unmet healthcare needs. This contrasts to 9.6% of children with other disabilities and 2.6% of children without disabilities. According to the national survey, 93% of children with autism have one or more co-occurring health conditions, compared to 62% of children with other disabilities. This finding is backed by considerable research associating autism with high rates of many medical and mental health issues, including seizures, digestive disorders, disruptive sleep, anxiety, and depression, among others. Yet, these complex medical needs were not the sole, or even the primary driver, behind the disparities in access to needed services, according to the analysis. Of the circumstances strongly associated with unmet healthcare needs among children with autism were no or low-quality health insurance was number one, followed by no access to family-centered care that includes families as partners in the child's healthcare, adverse childhood conditions, including family separation, divorce, physical or emotional abuse, domestic violence in the home, and parental challenges. So those are all the challenges to unmet healthcare needs. But the number one, again, I'm just repeating, is low, no or low-quality health insurance. Upon realizing the need to increase the level of support for children and adults with autism spectrum disorder, many states have already adjusted insurance coverage. Two examples are, in January 2018, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Mississippi, United Healthcare of Mississippi, and Magnolia Health voluntarily agreed to lift the age cap of applied behavior analysis, ABA therapy, in the Mississippi autism mandate. In March 2019, Governor Ralph Northam of Virginia signed a bill that removed the age cap completely for autism coverage. It expands healthcare access for nearly 10,000 Virginians of all ages living with autism. Presently built Public Law 34-6, also known as Hunter's Law, mandates the maximum benefit of $50,000 per year for an eligible person of up to the age of nine, and limits the treatment of autism spectrum disorder to a $25,000 maximum benefit per year for an eligible person who is between the ages of nine and 21. So the Bill 66-35 seeks to amend Public Law 34-6, Hunter's Law, to widen the age range and increase health insurance coverage to $75,000 maximum benefit per year for an eligible person up to the age of 15. So it raises that age from nine to 15, and increases the benefit to $75,000. And it would increase the benefit, well, it would give the benefit of $25,000 to those persons between the ages of 16 and 21. According to the Guam Autism Center, the care needs of children with autism spectrum disorder vary, with some needing additional therapy hours than current insurance caps under Hunter's Law may provide. So Bill 66, by extending insurance coverage, will help make autism services accessible and provide for the higher quality of support and care for the families and children that deserve these services. Bill 68 is to appropriate $150,000 from the General Fund to the Department of Administration for the continued operation of the Guam Autism Center. In 2016, Public Law 33-227 authorized the construction of a DIT business center, this is a, and a one-stop community resource and wellness center. This is on the property across from JFK. Designating space for a comprehensive autism center. The space was to be leased at a negotiated rate, not to exceed fair market value, to a not-for-profit organization whose mission is to provide a comprehensive autism center where children and families affected by autism spectrum disorder may receive appropriate services at a centralized location. GIDA was to issue an RFP to select a lease. In 2018, still pending the construction of the DIT business center and one-stop community resource and wellness center, the 34th Guam Legislature in Public Law 34-42 allocated $150,000 as an initial investment to stand up the program to a nonprofit organization who would provide autism services at a temporary location. The Hunter Speaks nonprofit organization continues to facilitate the Guam Autism Center and provide needed diagnostic and treatment services to families with children on the autism spectrum. It's been established that the earlier the diagnosis and the earlier a child receives treatment will yield the best results and outcome. Although children experiencing disabilities or differences can expect specialized education programs through the Department of Education, professional intervention in terms of diagnosis and early intervention should occur at the earliest of ages. It is established that many children with some form of disorder can be diagnosed as early as the age of two. The Guam Autism Center is the first service provider on Guam providing applied behavior analysis therapy, or ABA, an evidence-based and gold standard therapy model. Prior to the opening of the Guam Autism Center, families with autistic children, you know, had to make difficult choices regarding whether to leave off-island to seek necessary services for their children, or, you know, whether to return home because of the challenges in seeking services. The FY 2018 appropriation was utilized to provide training of technicians, recruitment of specialists, pay operational costs, and run, and it expires, that will run out, that funding will run out, this month estimated. Hunter Speaks has also started building health insurance under Hunter's Law as a means of long-term sustainability. However, the organization estimates that it will take approximately two years before the Guam Autism Center is completely self-funded. It's therefore the intent of Bill 68-35 to provide the additional financing support needed to keep the doors of the Guam Autism Center open and operational. So it would extend the $150,000 and repeat that in FY 19, which is our current fiscal year. And the good news is that we saw that the governor had included an $150,000 appropriation into 2020 fiscal year budget also. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Duñez, thank you for showing up, because I'm, as you notice, I'm the only male up front. I'm surrounded by women, and you happen to sign up first, so you lead the women. All right, Dr. Duñez? You will start, and then after that, we will go in, everybody to your right, okay? And then I'd like to also recognize that I did ask Ms. Teresa Cruzos to join us, because she did sign in for speaking on this bill. And if you want, Dr. Duñez, because you signed up, pretty much most of you have all signed up for both bills.
Okay.
So you can go ahead and speak about both, okay? Because they're both related.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hafeday Speaker, Senators, my name's Dr. Vincent Duñez, and I'm here today to provide testimony and support of Bill 68-35, as well as Bill 66-35. First and foremost, I would just like to start off by thanking you all for hearing my concerns, both as a parent of a young autistic boy, Hunter, as well as an advocate and leader in the autism community. I want to thank Senator Terahy for taking on the challenge of introducing such critical pieces of legislation that, if passed, will be monumental to the future of our island's children suffering from autism spectrum disorder. As many of you know, ASD is one of the most prevalent and debilitating disorders that exists today. One in 59 kids in the United States will fall on the autism spectrum. That's one in 42 boys and one in 189 girls. With those staggering odds, it is likely that every one of us here in this room will at some point, if not already, be touched by someone with the diagnosis. When my wife and I first found out about Hunter, it was a terrifying thing for us, not knowing what his future would hold, not having anyone to help navigate the maze of challenges we soon would face as a young family. We went through the motions here on Guam and just, and found just scarce resources at best. Our only option after years of searching was to leave the beautiful island we called home. We eventually ventured to Hawaii and toured an amazing autism center, which we planned to enroll Hunter in full-time. After seeing the kids there and the quality of care they were receiving, it troubled us that the children on Guam didn't have the same access to, didn't have access to the same wonderful opportunities as everyone else. We were then faced with the dilemma of relocating and ignoring what was going on versus staying and sacrificing our only son. I think our choice is obvious in what led to the formation of Hunter Speaks. The organization has worked tirelessly the past three years, executing our strategic plan to improve services on the island. We have made tremendous progress with the help of our government leaders, past and present, as well as those in the private sector and community members. We were able to recruit Guam's first board-certified behavior analyst and two registered behavior technicians, as well as train a handful more. There is still so much work to be done, but definitely light at the end of the tunnel. In November of 2018, we opened our doors at the Temporary Autism Center in Upper Tumon, providing ABA therapy for the first time on island. We now service six clients in a pilot program and hope to grow as quickly as possible. Of the 260 children we've identified already, it is only a fraction of what needs to be, but everything good has to start somewhere. Getting our island up to speed with the rest of the world is an enormous task, and we're certainly up for the challenge, but we can't do it alone. I plead with you today to trust in our organization to get the job done, and pray for your support of this bill. I didn't know that we are providing testimony for both bills, so if it's okay, I just had an additional statement to make regarding ABA specifically. Applied Behavior Analysis is the most widely adopted and proven form of treatment for individuals with autism spectrum disorder, and remains the gold standard in the United States. Its data-driven methods are endorsed by the U.S. Surgeon General, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American Medical Association. Most children on the spectrum require early intensive behavior intervention, roughly 25 to 40 hours per week, and can make tremendous strides with it. The current stipulations under Hunter's Law allows for an average of only 15 to 17 hours of therapy per week for children zero to nine, and merely half of that for those nine to 21. Although it was a great start and critical to bringing ABA therapy to Guam, the present dollar cap and age restrictions severely limit access to much-needed care resulting in suboptimal treatment and slower, less desirable progress. As an organization, we understand the financial burden this increase in coverage can have on our island's smaller insurance companies and the community as a whole. However, intervening early not only will improve the quality of life for the child and their family, but may also lead to significant cost savings in the long run by reducing the need for lifetime therapy, special education in public schools, and other government support services, such as housing and healthcare, as these children reach adulthood. Although many states have moved toward eliminating the dollar limits entirely, like Senator Terahy mentioned, we realize that Guam, in our unique situation, may not be able to sustain those costs. We feel that raising the dollar limit to $75,000 per year, a roughly 50% increase from present, will create a happy medium in general.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
I'd like to also recognize that's joined us Senator Jim Weyland, and also like to recognize that Isa Koki? Koki? Okay. Ma'am, you're next.
If I'd known I signed in second, to be a second up, I would have signed last. So here I am. Good morning. Good morning, Speaker Munya Barnes, Madam Chairperson, Committee Members on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation Land and Justice, and Senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. I pretty know pretty much most of you, and pretty much dating myself also. My name is Pamela Canata. I am the grandmother of six-year-old, I haven't started, I'm already crying, six-year-old Amelia Canata, our little angel who was diagnosed with autism at the tender age of three years old. I thank each and every one of you to even hear us today for this very small segment of our autism community here in Guam, because we are just a sliver of what we have out there in the island, and I thank all of you for your attention this morning. I testify today in support of passage Bill 68-35, an act to appropriate $150,000 to the, from the General Fund to the Department Administration for Continued Operation of the Guam Autism Center. I testify in place of my daughter, Sophia Mae Canata, as she's caring for Amelia, who is really sick today and unable to attend this hearing. Before Amelia, autism was something we knew very little about, I'm sorry to say. For those of you who have not experienced autism, we were once in your shoes. In order to really understand autism, please imagine the following. Imagine what would, what would it be like not to hear your child's voice? Imagine what would it be like if your child could not express basic feelings of love, fear, pain, hunger, recite their alphabets, count, or run? This is what autism looks and feels like for children and the families who live with the diagnosis. For Amelia, this is her reality. These are the challenges she and our family face every second of every day. I want to share Amelia's story from the beginning to provide you a greater understanding of the gaps in services and the struggles children with autism and their families on Guam face. Amelia's story began six years ago, when she entered this world with a broken clavicle and damaged nerves in her arm and eye. My family and I did not realize that this was just the beginning of a long journey for which we were not prepared. Aside from Amelia's newborn complications, everything seemed relatively normal at first. When Amelia did not meet the normal developmental milestones, we assumed, hoped, she was progressing at a different pace, her pace. However, with the passage of time and the absence of milestones, we became exceedingly concerned. Amelia had trouble holding her head, crawling, and reaching for objects. We would eventually discover this was due to Amelia's abnormal levels of muscle tone, which is referred to hypotonia, or commonly known as floppy child, or floppy child syndrome. It was the lack of milestones that told us we were dealing with something serious and that Amelia was in desperate need of medical attention. In search of answers, we turned to medical doctors on island, yet it would be a long journey before Amelia would receive an actual diagnosis. We soon realized with this, we soon realized this was because there were no developmental disability doctors on island. Throughout the long journey to a diagnosis, Sophia, my daughter, never asked, why me, God? Why Amelia? Instead, Sophia continued to focus her energies on researching how we could better assist Amelia. After a year of frustrating doctor visits and meeting with different governmental and private programs, we, as a family, came to the painful conclusion that Guam did not have the resources. It was one of the most painful decisions of our lives, which impacted our entire family. And after much deliberation and prayer, my husband Frank, Sophia, and I decided that Amelia and Sophia would relocate to San Diego, California, to seek the medical and therapeutic care necessary. In San Diego, from two to three years of age, Amelia received varied medical attention and therapies, such as occupational, physical, speech, and applied behavioral analysis, ABA, the gold standard right now for treating autism. She was also enrolled in a school system that placed her in a class dedicated to children with autism. To add to Amelia's situation, she began the regimen of daily medication for a case of petit mouse absence seizures. However, despite the numerous and strong resources provided in San Diego, and despite the fact that Amelia was thriving, Sophia and Amelia were forced to return home, due to the lack of family support. And as we all found to realize, and we all know, it takes a village to care for a child with autism. So you see, in the six short years little Amelia has been through, so much in search of necessary care. Without the love and support of family, and friends, and vital institutions and programs, Amelia's life will not, will never improve. Therefore, it is with all our hearts that we appeal to you and ask your support for the much-needed funding for the Guam Autism Center, which offers behavioral therapy, the gold standard, ABA, with children with autism. In conclusion, my family, myself, Sophia, we offer our support of Bill 68-35, Continued Operation of the Guam Autism Center, as Amelia needs over 100 hours a week alone for applied behavioral analysis, which the Autism Center offers today. With requested funding through this bill, Amelia and other Guam families will not have to relocate to avail themselves of services. With the help of the Autism Center, Amelia will be able to receive the care that will focus on improving play skills, communication, self-care, academics, and basic social living. Without additional funding, and in fact, increased funding, the center will not be able to extend the assistance that it sorely is needed for autism, for the community of the families of Guam. The families in Guam should not have to leave the island and abandon their support system in search of services as we did. On behalf of our angel Amelia, her mother Sophia, and our family, Suzuas Mossi, and God bless you all, for hearing my testimony this morning. Thank you. And I also was not aware that the second pass, supported the bill, but I concur, I ditto everything that Dr. Vince Duñez had said earlier for the bill. $75,000 cap would be, I think, a good ground. A lot of the families in Guam are in sorely need of help, medical help, and insurance would really be a big help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, take a deep breath. You're next.
My name is Tiffany Rios, and I've been working with individuals on the autism spectrum disorder as an applied behavior analyst or ABA therapist for over 11 years. I fall more and more in love with ABA with every therapy session I conduct. It's hard to describe to people what our job is, aside from amazing. The best answer I can give is that our goal is to help the individuals gain independent skills to complete daily activities that we all take for granted. We basically work really hard to not have a job one day, because they no longer require our services. I've had the privilege to work with individuals with autism from the ages of three to 21 in home, school setting, vocational programs, and in the community. I've seen firsthand the benefits of ABA, such as an increase in language and communication skills, improvement in joint attention, decrease in problem behaviors, and the one that I feel is very important, social skills. It has been amazing to watch a child who at the age of seven could only, was only making babbling sounds, eventually make his first word cookie, where previously he would cry and drop to the floor when he was not able to communicate his needs. ABA gave him a voice. To teach a 17-year-old to not only grocery shop, but also pay for them on his own, appropriately ask those around him how their day was, and display appropriate social skills in a store. A 17-year-old who previously would take items from other people's hands, from their carts, because to him, that was helping them. ABA gave him independence. In 2017, I moved to Guam from Illinois. I immediately started searching for autism services, and to my surprise, the only search I could find was Hunter Speaks. Soon after that, I met Vincent Tania Duñez. The first thing I saw was a mother desperately looking for answers. I started working with Hunter in January of 2018, and soon after that, I met three more individuals with autism. With each new family I met, my heart broke more and more. I met a five-year-old girl with no form of communication and non-vocal, a six-year-old boy with no communication and limited vocal sounds. Both kids would pull at parents and communicate, would, to communicate when they needed something. I felt angry for the kids and for their families. How could they ask for a drink, a snack, a toy, or even a hug? It was like someone taped their mouth shut, and then they began asking them, why are you crying? Why are you not listening? Tell me, tell me. But how could they? How could they even get their basic needs across to the ones that they loved? The more families I talked with, the more my heart continued to break. It broke because I knew what ABA could do to help each child reach their highest potential, just like I had seen with previous clients. Several families on Guam have left their home, families, and their islands to get their child the recommended medical service prescribed by doctors, and many families are currently questioning if they need to leave. Currently, there's over 260 individuals on autism spectrum from the ages of three to 21, just in the public school systems here. What I do know from being a part of Hunter Speaks is who the people of Guam are. You all are fighters. I can best describe it as a family, where everyone looks out and supports one another. I've never met so many people who want to be involved, learn, and support the therapy their child's in. It's exciting to watch a child that three months ago had no form of communication, now tell us they want something to drink, to play Ring Around the Rosie, ask for a specific toy or food, or a child engage while playing with their pairs and smiling, a child break a rigid routine to give the correct answer to a question we ask them, and to see each of these kids master current targets for programs that are specifically adapted to each of their needs. It's amazing for a child to learn that their ability to communicate has power and meaning. Currently, there's no cure for autism spectrum disorder, and ABA is the recommended evidence-based treatment. Because of this, parents need continued funding and support as their children age and their needs shift. Without ABA, individuals on Guam may not develop the necessary skills required to function at home, in the schools, or in the communities, leading to a life of challenges and hardships. Today, we ask that you honor the requests made and continue to support our island's autism-centered Hunter Speaks.
Thank you, Ms. Rios, and thank you for your Thank you, Ms. Rios, and thank you for your service. Ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Camille Paulino with the Hunter Speaks Organization. I came before this governing body two years ago when Bill Number 16-34, now Hunter's Law, was first proposed to ask for your support to bring necessary medical treatment to our island for our people with autism spectrum disorder. When Hunter's Law passed, it was the start of something amazing, and I'm so happy to report how much progress and change has occurred since then. We are now an operational center with certified staff who's providing ABA therapy, the only approved medical treatment for individuals with ASD, to some of our island's young children on the spectrum. Our community has come a long way in supporting this cause. April is Autism Awareness Month, and you may have noticed the village signs in support, the sea of blue shirts, the buildings lit up each evening in blue, and the pictures of our young people with a reminder to think differently. Two years ago, this was a dream that we anticipated would take a long journey to achieve, but with so much of the community's support, it has become a reality, and it is an emotional moment to look back on where we came from to today. Our mission remains the same, to provide medically necessary treatment to a population that often has not been able to speak for themselves, to provide them with options for an inclusive and fulfilling life, and to service as many individuals as we can. Today, I ask for your support to help us to continue to make progress toward our mission so that we can bring more awareness, more training to service providers, and more care to our children. Please help us to continue to move forward because we've come too far to look back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paulino. Yes, breathe in, breathe out. You're next, ma'am.
Hello. Sorry. My name is Jaclyn Canada, and I'm here to provide testimony and support of the proposed legislation. For the past decade, I have worked with individuals with autism spectrum disorder as a behavioral therapist providing medically necessary treatment. During this time, I've had the opportunity to develop a skill set that has been utilized to treat clients as young as two and as old as 26. I've worked in homes, clinics, classrooms, and camps, and have witnessed firsthand the direct result of applied behavioral analysis. I've cried alongside many parents for things that come naturally to other children, such as the first time their child had a friend who wasn't simply playing along because they were told they had to. The CDC states that autism affects one in every 59 children. There are no restrictions on age or geographical location. According to a 2018 demographics profile, there are over 46,000 children between the ages of one and 14 in Guam. That leaves a minimum possibility of almost 800 children needing treatment. Applied Behavioral Analysis, or ABA, is recognized as the gold standard of treatment for autism by the American Medical Association. ABA is more than just behavioral therapy. It is a proven scientific method to teach all skills vital for individuals to integrate into mainstream society. I could continue to speak numbers and science, but others have been doing that for you. So instead, I will speak how this has personally affected and changed the life of someone very dear to me. About eight years ago, my nephew was born, a beautiful, healthy baby boy. His name Mason. Fast forward three years to a toddler with minimal language, delays in development across all domains, and doctors without answers. A devastated family, a heartbroken mother, and a child who threw tantrums and screamed but did not want to be touched. By Mason's fourth birthday, he started an intensive 30-hours-a-week program, all funded through his insurance. Quickly, we started to see progress as language was coming and the ability to see what could be if we could just find out how to reach him. We spent hours at the table practicing rules, teaching social cues, learning life skills, and more. Literally thousands of hours, contriving situations to practice, social scenarios, artificial classroom environments, fake birthday parties, trick-or-treat rehearsals, and community outings, all for the hope that he could someday go into the community and tolerate when there's a strange noise like a toilet flushing or a stranger humming nearby. Thousands of dollars well-spent so that Mason could function on his own within our society. Currently, he attends a regular school without any additional support. He has friends, and he can play with toys and go to the park and be a kid. His life has been forever changed, and his family's life has been changed, and he will never have to be that kid at the birthday party again, all because of ABA. They often say that autism does not look like anything, but that's because it's everything. It's not the same for everyone. It's a spectrum disorder, and there's no way to know how many hours of therapy an individual will require to reach their fullest potential. But the hope is that we always have the support we need to get there. I haven't been on Guam long, but I have been here long enough to see that this island values its community. We often say it's never too late to make a change, but with the age cap, you are telling some people that it is too late for them. We need to increase both the budget and the age cap to remove the limits on what we are saying our local community can achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canada, and thank you also for your service. Ms. Krasostol. Oh, yeah. Yes.
Hafedey, good morning, Speaker and Senators. Thank you for allowing me to provide testimony and support of the proposed legislation. My name is Teresa Cruz Blas, and the legislation being addressed today is of paramount interest to me because I am mother to a six-year-old boy, Eli, who is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, ASD, and currently receiving services at the Guam Autism Center. Eli was diagnosed with ASD shortly before his second birthday in 2014. He has been diagnosed with what is known as classic autism. He is nonverbal and requires substantial support to complete basic self-care tasks and other activities related to independent living. Since receiving this diagnosis and despite the limited to almost nonexistent treatment resources on island for individuals with ASD, my husband and I have committed to providing him with all recommended services by his educational and medical providers without much success in finding treatment that actually worked. In January 2018, through networking with Tania Duñez, the co-founder of Hunter Speaks Organization, my family was fortunate enough to cross paths with an individual who provided, an individual who provided ABA to children with ASD in the mainland prior to her relocation to the island. ABA therapy was provided to Eli as a private in-home service until his official transition to the Guam Autism Center in December that year. Prior to Eli receiving ABA therapy, tasks deemed as simple for most children his age, such as feeding oneself, putting on, taking off clothing, playing with other children, or simply waiting for something, were struggles that often resulted in meltdowns which placed him in a serious state of distress. It took my husband and I quite some time to understand that prior to losing control of his behavior, Eli was simply trying to communicate with us. We just didn't know how to do the same. Moments like this have left us drowning in a whirlpool of guilt, sadness, and fear. I would often ask myself, "What's wrong with me? Why can't I help him? Why him?" While the struggles and challenges of raising a child with ASD will always exist, the introduction of ABA in our lives has been significant. Within the year, Eli learned to wave goodbye to others when being told goodbye. He is able to respond to his name by making brief eye contact and is able to sit with us at the dining table to enjoy mealtime as a family. With some assistance, Eli is now able to perform daily self-care tasks, such as brushing his teeth, feeding himself, and has shown more interest in socializing with his peers and his sister. Meltdowns are few, and his ability to be in control of his behavior has improved drastically. Such progress may seem small and insignificant, but they are tremendous outcomes for him. But even more remarkable and exciting, our family has a functional means to communicate with Eli. Eli has been taught how to use a picture exchange communication system, what is also known as PEX, which is an alternative communication system to help convey his thoughts and needs. He will eventually be at a level to learn how to use a symbol-based text-to-speech voice augmentative and alternative communication application on a mobile device. Looking back on this journey up to this point, I can remember snippets in time when I would think, "I will never know my son's voice." The thought of Eli feeling unwanted and alone because I simply could not understand what he needed from me was tormenting. If I could not understand my child, how could anyone else? PEX through ABA has given Eli a voice. How beautiful is that? My imminent reality, which seemed hopeless, is now promising. It truly is a beautiful experience to feel connected with your child. There is no doubt that Eli is responding very well to ABA, to his ABA programs, and has accomplished so much more in the recent year than I could have imagined. He has worked incredibly hard to get where he is at, but he still has a long way to go, and he will need to continue this treatment in the years to come. The passing of Hunter's Law was the first step in affording Eli the opportunity to be a student at the Guam Autism Center to receive ABA therapy in a more structured environment. He currently receives 12 hours of therapy per week, which is less than a third of the recommended and prescribed 40 hours of therapy deemed necessary for children like him to learn the skills and behaviors to be successful throughout their day. As we increase his time at the center, it is projected that the current insurance cap for children his age of $50,000 for autism treatment will be exhausted prior to the end of the year. The thought of reaching this point is frightening. It would be at this time consideration to reduce Eli's ABA hours and/or completely withdraw him from the center will be made as to avoid our family from sinking into a financial black hole. We simply would not be able to afford this treatment. The Guam Autism Center through the Hunter Speaks Organization has been a symbol of hope for Eli and our family. It has also been a symbol of hope for many of our island families on this autism journey who have been fighting, praying, and waiting for the treatment their child desperately needs. Initiatives to support the growth and expansion of the center are critical for this community. Legislation that supports access to ABA treatment gives children like Eli a chance to one day attain self-sufficiency and contribute to society. Families like mine should be given the chance to dream and hope for the same success of their child, just like any other family. But families like mine undeniably need the support from leaders in our community like you to help make this a reality. We need your help to champion change that provides a quality life for children and individuals like my son. It is often said that the things you take for granted, someone else is praying for. Eli developing the necessary skills not only to lead, to not only lead a fulfilling and meaningful life, but to survive beyond my time, is a prayer that will never end. This prayer will also be one of gratitude for the impact ABA has had on our entire family, a prayer of Thanksgiving for every person who has helped us on this journey. There is no question that Eli's diagnosis has forever changed my life. My son has been my greatest teacher in showing me that the healthiest path forward in life is one of patience, compassion, and love. Eli has taught me to love myself and others for who they are. I have learned to see others for not what they are, but for what they can become. Autism is exactly what I never knew I needed, and I have my son to thank for that. Thank you for your consideration of my viewpoint on the proposed legislation and allowing me to share my story.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Koki.
Koki. Hafedey, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Speaker, and Senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. My name is Isa Marie Cruz Koki, and my godson's name is Eli. He is six years old. He loves rockets, straws, and ice cream. He is also nonverbal and has autism. With the passage of Hunter's Law of 2017, Eli has been able to receive regular and consistent ABA therapy for about a year and a half. I am here to provide testimony of how I have seen great progress in his social skills since he started receiving therapy. He has become more focused and engaged with me. He's become my best friend. His eye contact has increased tremendously. There are far less meltdowns. He uses a book of pictures to show us what he wants. He follows simple instructions. He responds well to discipline now. If anything, the improvement in his interactions and behavior has given me hope, hope that one day he will have the life skills necessary for him to be a bit more independent. It also allows for me to know that he knows right from wrong, something I couldn't say I knew before he received ABA therapy. However, the hard work is far from being complete. There are still times when he would bang his head or pull his three-year-old sister's hair. He still needs help tying his shoes and brushing his teeth. So I'm here asking for you to support the bills before you. We have seen the great work that comes out of it, but we know that there is still a lot more work to be done. We want progress and hope, progress for him to be able to communicate with us and hope that he will one day be able to do things, do many things on his own. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. If we can just make sure before you leave, you provide us a copy of your testimony so it be part of the committee's report. I will now ask the Speaker if she has any questions she wants posed on the panel.
Suzuas Masi, Mr. Chair and Senator Turlai, for having these public hearings, joint public hearings this morning for Bills 66 and 68. I just want to take this time to extend my thank yous to each and every one of you. As we heard your stories, as we heard the support, we've heard the leadership that you guys have done to bring this awareness out to our community as we support ASD this month of April. I just want to take the time that it is through your efforts and your leadership that Guam continues to better understand what our children and our families go through and experience. And I want to say that I know that in our community, a lot of times, resources is the key and answer to everything and is what can we do to leverage or what can we do to continue to provide resources for the programs that is gravely needed here on Guam. And my take is, I was sitting and asking the author if I could help co-sponsor this with her and literally tried to go one extra step and step out of the box. When I talked to Dr. Vince earlier, a month and a half ago maybe, I said, "What can we do to leverage and seek other grant resources that could help us?" And I want to say I stand committed to that. I want to say that I support Senator Theresa, Senator San Agustin, and the efforts of pushing this forward. I know it's not easy, and I know that some may say that whether we ask for 150,000 or ask to increase, that we know that just based on the population that there are more families out there that are probably going on diagnosed, and we need to continue to step up and do better. And I want to say that as your servant and as a policymaker, it's important that we continue to keep the stories going, share the stories, and also help us compile the data so that we could be better able to utilize and leverage it so we can look for additional funding. And maybe that's one question I'd like to ask Dr. Vince Duñez. If there is data compiled since the inception of Hunter Speaks that we could help, that it could help utilize, that we could utilize to bring and seek for additional service, whether it be through our general fund or special services, but also look for alternative grants out there within the federal government or with nonprofit, other nonprofit organizations so that we can move forward to give the program that our families need to be at its 100% capacity?
Yeah, definitely. I think we
I think we, when we met a while back, we did talk about this a little bit, and the data is out there and just tracked through either Guam Early Intervention or through DOE. From the organization's standpoint, we have been having trouble accessing that data, and I'm not sure what the hesitancy has been with some of the other organizations like Guam Early Intervention, but we do know that the data exists and we just may need a little bit of help accessing that data to be able to analyze what the true numbers In the clinic, we definitely have data with regard to the clients that we treat, but in terms of Guam as a whole and our entire population, we don't have all the numbers that we would want.
Is there a waiting list for those wanting to work closely with Hunter Speaks and the program that it has for our community?
There is a list. There is a waitlist, and because the therapy is so intensive, each technician here is only able to service about one to two kids. And it is our hope in moving forward with the funding and everything, we're going to be able to train more and more technicians so that we can intake as many kids as possible. We do have a waitlist, and we access the waitlist based on medical necessity. And so as we grow our staff, we pull clients off the list as we're able to accommodate.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and Senator Turlai, I want to say that I support the efforts. I wholeheartedly support it. I hope that we can see how fast we can expeditiously work on this to get it on the agenda. I think it's important, but more importantly, I think that if we can get assistance in helping look for the data that's necessary, I'm almost positive that we can possibly work to trying to tap into federal grants or other opportunities out within the national level that can help us get funding for Guam. So if we can have that continued collaboration, and I guess from our side, we will continue to engage with the government services to see what kind of information that we can put down to look for those resources.
Definitely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker. Proceed to the end on my far right, and I'll start with Senator Moyleman. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Senator Turlai for introducing these two bills, increasing the cap of the budget and also the ages of those that we're hearing the voices of today. I also want to thank the speakers today for letting us feel the voices of Amelia and Mason and Eli. It's very helpful to understand the situations for those who cannot express for themselves, but you did, you did express, each one of you expressed it very well, so I truly appreciate that. I do understand the gold standard of applied behavioral analysis and how it's a must and it has helped, and you expressed the direct results and how it needs to be continued. And I believe this body, our 35th Guam Legislature, is behind you all and wants to do our best for you, so thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Sabina Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to thank Senator Turlai for introducing those two bills. I just want to say to all of you, you're not alone. I know the struggle that you've faced as an aunt, as an educator, and I know that you really need the support, especially when they're at a younger age, because like you said, when you catch it earlier, you can, there's interventions that can really help them, that can get them through their lifetime. And I also know that you also need support throughout the lifetime of the child because they need to feel that sense of belonging and they need to feel the sense of purpose. And, you know, I do, I support these bills because they help to address the stopgap measure, the funding that's needed right now. But like the Speaker has said, we need to look at long-term solutions and building capacity, and I want to thank you for all your dedication that you've shown throughout the years to support this community, which may even be larger than what we have right now or what we know right now. And so, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Turlai?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for being here today and taking time out to testify. I just have a few questions for you. First, Dr. Duennius and Mrs. Blas, I humbly ask if you can please send the testimony, if you can, right away, if you have it already, send it to senator tellotia@gmail.com. There's some things in there that I like to do some research on. I'm surprised we don't have the Director of, you know, DISIT here today providing testimony, and I wish he was here, so I hope he's listening so he can also provide some input on this and definitely support. So my question to Dr. Duennius is, how many technicians do you have, or how many counselors do you have at the center right now?
We have, currently, we have one board-certified behavior analyst who supervises all the programs under her work for registered technicians who do the direct one-to-one therapy. Per board guidelines, the board-certified behavior analyst is only allowed to ethically supervise 15 cases. So in doing the numbers for Guam, we anticipate that we would need approximately 10 to 15 BCBA's and about 75 technicians to accommodate the entire population that we're.
So what do you have currently? You just have one person?
We just have one BCBA and four technicians.
Okay, so four techs?
Correct.
And one certified?
Yes, and I just want to mention that we use the pilot program, the current six kids that we're treating, as a way to train some of our local people to become technicians. And so that's, and that's our way of trying to build our staff as quick as possible.
And through this training for the techs, is it through GCC or do you do it on campus?
Independently at the center.
At the center, okay. How many clients, how many clients do you have currently?
We have six.
Only six?
We have six, and I'm not sure how many we have exactly on the waitlist.
Okay, that's what you mentioned earlier. Okay. I'm greatly appreciative. I'm definitely looking into this. I have a nephew as well, and two nephews, actually, and unfortunately, they have to live off island to get the kind of treatment they need, one in Washington and one in Hawaii. But the one in Hawaii is going to come home, and hopefully that waiting list won't be that long, but I have a funny feeling it is. So I definitely know the struggles, and I wanted just to say to the parents, you know, that I know my nephews are the most loving individuals. They have their times, you know, certain moments, but I've never met in my life individuals that have a true heart than those with autism. So I thank you so much.
I just want to mention that what inspired us to do this project was when we visited Hawaii to take Hunter for an evaluation, and we had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Amy Wish, who runs the center that we were going to enroll Hunter in. So ABC Group is one of the biggest autism groups in Honolulu. And Dr. Wish, she started off exactly where we are now. She started off servicing two clients out of her home and now runs one of the biggest autism centers in Hawaii. She has not only autism center there, but she has branched off into neighboring islands and has done online programs and even ventures as far off as Japan. And so in 10 years, she was able to do that, and we see the same potential with Hunter Speaks. This is definitely not an easy task, but again, we need to start somewhere, and we do see that potential for Guam. It is our hope that not only do we service our island's population, but maybe even be able to take it a step further and service our neighboring islands and expand regionally. So we can see that already with our medical clinics, that, you know, clinics that started 10 years ago are now opening up multiple locations and expanding, and it's just going to take time and trust, but we really do think that five to 10 years from now, we're going to be able to look back and say, you know, we were all a part of this, and we're going to be able to, you know, put Guam, put Guam on the map. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Dr. Duennius, the autism center, where is it located?
We were gracious enough to, or we were lucky enough to have a space donated to us by Mr. Ho at Cortec, and so we use 1,200 square foot space in Upper Tumon at Dos Montes Plaza, where we do a lot of the intake. We provide not only center-based therapy, but the beauty of ABA is that you can do this in-home, you can do this in school and in the community. And so for some of the cases, we do provide therapy up at the center, but a lot of times we're in the home with families, teaching them strategies to work with their children.
Okay, Doc, was the center supposed to be located with DISIT across JFK?
It was. It was.
Okay, so I'm going to use the word "is" going to happen, okay? And that's, I want to be positive about that, Doc. The reason why I bring that up is because I did meet with the Gura folks, and I asked them, "How can we get federal grants for folks like yourself, nonprofit organizations?" He said, "We can get grants not for government operation, but for nonprofit." So being the oversight of housing and Gura, I'm asking to look into that, because at the DISIT center right across JFK, there's a lot of nonprofit organizations can be housed there. Can't build the DISIT, but if we can build the autism center and everybody else by federal grants, then I would love to see that. I know that would help the autism group. And I'm in support of the bill totally. I noticed that one of my colleagues asked me, says on the BBMR, the fiscal notice, says, "All the funds for 2019 has been accounted for?" Yeah, that's what they say, but I know we can find ways to, if we need to deappropriate, then we need to deappropriate somebody. Autism is important. We need to take care of you folks and the children. There shouldn't be a doubt about that. That should be an easy one. And if any other agency wants to say, "No, don't take 150,000," I think Senator Turlai is probably going to reach to me and says, "No, let's make it more," and I have no problem with that. But, you know, we'll work it. I'll work with the author of the bill, and we'll do what we need to do, because these are the children. You know, I have also family and friends like Senator Turlai that are also autism, so we'll just do what we need to do, and we just hope that everybody be patient and not take too personal when we take, when we ask to deappropriate from other agencies. But work with it, because these are, there's only one Guam. It takes the community, so we all need a whole hands and just move forward from there. All right? Senator Turlai, the author, and you would do the closing, Ben.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you who've testified. I also want to recognize that there's also testimony that's been submitted in writing by Select Care. Would you like to testify verbally? No? All right, so there's a written testimony by Select Care, and we've also discussed the bill with the acting director of DISIT, and in fact, she sounded supportive. In fact, she was asking about the 21, and it was her, I guess, her experiences in the Department of Education and special ed, and that she thought that should be lifted to, especially for boys, up to 26 or men, but that, there was an issue with that, but I realize this is a work in progress. And that's what I appreciate about, I guess, this bill, and I have to admit that I had to learn a lot since I first became a senator. I want to thank, you know, your organization, Hunter Speaks organization, but I also want to thank the Autism Community Together organization, who has done such a great job of community outreach and showing us, and I really, really appreciate those, like, meeting the children of autism and seeing how the word "spectrum" is so appropriate and how I had to learn all of that. And so I'm still learning along with you, so just be patient with all of us. We're all learning, and, but you're right, that it has impacted every one of us, our families and our community. And so we want to help each other, and we want to support you. I want to also acknowledge that DOE, and so through Guam Early Intervention, Cedars has done some training, and the Department of Education, so they are before this center, right? They are our, they're the ones who we are looking to, and they have actually done some really good work, because we've met their students in these outreach events, and I just think the more resources we can give to them too, the better, and I think ideally, right? We bring our successes and we share them across the board for everyone. So it is very concerning that, yeah, so this bill is almost like a, it's not even a drop in the bucket. It's a really small thing compared to the need. So we're looking at a recognized need of at least 260 children, but if we follow the statistics, then perhaps much more unidentified, up to 800, is that what you estimated? And so very concerning. So I guess, Dr. Duennius, if I could just ask you one more time, and to just explain the potential of a pilot program to increase. So you described who you have employed, and maybe if you could just repeat that, and how that might, how we can grow, how the potential will grow?
Yeah, so the beauty of the technician position is that the training doesn't take very long, and so most training programs consist of a short online course, maybe two to three weeks, and then following that, short time in the center, getting hands-on training, and then taking a nationally-recognized board exam. So the whole process can take anywhere from maybe two to six months. And so it's not like we have to send people to school for four years, and so we're able to produce technicians in a pretty reasonable amount of time. I think the biggest challenge we're finding is finding people who are the right fit for the program, because you got, we've had different cohorts of training programs, but because it's such a specific type of therapy, you really have to have the passion for the field. And so it's just moving forward, trying to network with GCC or trying to network with EOG to develop these programs in Cedars, I think is going to make the biggest impact long-term. So I don't think it's going to be hard to build up to that capacity. One thing, one reason why we asked for additional funding is that it is something that allow us, something that would allow us to be able to recruit, because since we started the center, we have been getting a lot of interest from people in the mainland. Tiffany and Jacqueline are prime examples, and we, in July, are going to be recruiting a second board-certified behavior analyst who can supervise 15 more cases, and there's just more and more interest coming into the organization. There's actually another guy from Guam who's getting his doctorate in ABA, who is expected to come back within a year or two. So we're getting the interest, and I don't think we necessarily need to train a lot of people from the ground up. I think we're going to also be able to recruit the amount of people we need from off-island because they're out there. It's just that they never had a place to come, to come home to, and so I think this would provide that opportunity.
All right, so I'm glad you also clarified that 15 cases per board-certified behavior analyst. So that's also one of the limiting factors. So you've got one now, and I think there are two on Guam, is that correct?
Camille is supervisee, so she is training to be a board-certified behavior analyst. We have another, Crystal, and then Jacqueline and Tiffany are also training to get their credentials eventually as analysts, and so, and so I think, you know.
All right, and I know I've talked to you about working with GCC.
Yes.
So for the technician side, if you need up to 75, I noticed on your staffing panel that it, registered behavior technicians for direct therapy could make about $20 an hour and for indirect therapy about $10 an hour.
Yes.
I'm just putting that out there as a plug. But, you know, in all seriousness, I mean, this doesn't, I mean, we also, you know, are, I want to be cognizant of the concerns of, you know, the insurance industries and how right now we are having a struggle to insure small businesses, right? Or small businesses are very much struggling to get insurance that is affordable. And so, you know, part of Select Care's testimony is asking us to look at covering... to look at covering or making the bill that expands insurance coverage apply only to groups with more than 25 insured employees so that the small group market is protected from the larger premium impact and cost from this legislation, similarly to what other states have implemented to protect the small group market and include a definition for small groups to any employer with less than 25 employees. And so they do point out, and I think correctly, that we do not know exactly the impact from the existing bill. It was really only implemented recently. And that they thought that further study should be done to see the impacts of this type of legislation on the insurance premiums for small businesses, especially. Or, you know, overall, but especially in small businesses. So I just wanted to put that on the record because I want, you know, we, we just, as part of our jobs as lawmakers, we, those are the tough things we have to look at, and we can't ignore those things. So we're trying to do our best in balancing what needs to be done for the community and those who are vulnerable, and yet not to, you know, exclude whole groups of businesses from being able to afford coverage overall. So I want to thank you again for all your efforts, those who are doing the work and all across the island, and those who have helped us to learn along the way and for you to having the vision and to really use this pilot program to be self-sustaining. And I wondered if I could just, Mr. Chair, also just add one more plug because it is Autism Awareness Month. So I just wanted to announce a couple of things. One is tonight, Hunter Speaks organization is having the premiere of Blue Island at the Guam Museum, 6:30. This is a $50 fundraising event. And so I want to point out that you're also fundraising for your, this is, this money that we've put in does not cover it, and insurance proceeds cover part. But I'm sure your proceeds have helped to bring this along at a fast pace. Also, for the Autism Awareness Month schedule, there is also coming up a special nondenominational prayer service on Saturday, April 27, 11:00 a.m. There is a fire truck pool. That's the, that's the most recent one. Sorry, I lost it. Is that April 26, the fire truck pool? Is that at Paseo? Sorry, here it is. Fire Truck Pool fundraiser, Saturday, April 27. I'm sorry, April 27. And there's a fee to register. That's how they're going to raise money. And so that's for all different groups or businesses or even government organizations to join and help them raise some money. And there will be a wave on April 30 from 4 to 6 at the ITC intersection. So thank you again for all your work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There being that all that have signed in to testify have testified. The committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days. Please address your written testimony to the committees on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice. And to all at home, thank you for watching. It is now 10:25. Please enjoy your day and have a nice day. Thank you.